Yeah, when y'all are in the booth, I'm assuming, perfect. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this hour Monday, our meeting of the planning, Lunenburg Planning Board for Monday, April 28th, 2025. Excuse me. We are here at the Ballot Meeting Room in Town Hall. And if you are watching us online and wish to comment, we do not have a Zoom link for this meeting. So you'll have to come on down. It's otherwise pretty minor and we can, oh, this meeting is however, being recorded. And I think that's everything we have to say. So that's that. If anyone would like to lead us in the pledge, we can do that.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a comparatively light agenda ahead of us tonight. Enjoy that. May 12th is coming up, which is not. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. We will hop on Chair Director's Report. Everything is, I mean, continuing to run at the planning office. Hopefully, things get a little more even in the near, in the near future. We'll see. But till then, Logan and I are in there. Well, Logan's there all the time. I'm helping out where I'm able. And we're getting things going forward. You'll see a couple, like, a couple of things tonight that come out of some of the discussions we've had as a board and just want to make sure, like the board discussion for a certified vote. That's just to handle something we've kind of talked about as a board, but we do need to have a vote to make it more official, if that's what we want to do, about just peer reviews beforehand, as an option, not as a requirement. Great. But first up, we have a request for a de minimis change for 110 Pleasant Street to their previous site plan approval.
Good, good evening. Ryan Proctor, I'm with Dulles and Roy Civil Design Group. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Paradise Contractors. The board might remember, a little over two months ago, the board voted to issue a site plan approval decision for a project at 110 Pleasant Street, which involved the construction of an addition to an existing shop and garage utilized by an excavating contracting company. That decision has since been clerked with no appeals and has been recorded at the registry of deeds. That was completed, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. Subsequent to recording that decision, the applicant contacted us looking to make some minor modifications to the foundation of the proposed addition. So I've indicated those two areas in red. Basically, they're looking to extend the foundation in two locations, extend those out two feet from what was previously approved, one to the south, the northwest, excuse me, southwest side of the building and one to the southeast side of the building. So those could be two feet and the originally approved square footage of the addition was 1,092 square feet. The proposed final addition with this minor modification is 1,259 square feet. So the increase we're requesting is 467 square feet. Greg Roy was at the original meeting. He presented the project and I'll just reiterate that the area of this proposed addition is a combination of paved and compacted gravel. So we really do not see any impact with respect to stormwater with the previously approved addition and certainly with these minor modifications. Secondly, we do not see any impact to the required parking. There is adequate parking on the site, which we've documented on the site plan right at the top. And lastly, there was a comment from the Board of Health during the initial permitting of the project that we had to do a Title V inspection prior to issuance of a building permit. We still do intend to do that and given the use of the garage space that we are proposing, we don't anticipate any impact with respect to the system, the subject system relative to that. I will be brief and leave it at that. If there are any questions, I will be happy to take them.
Okay. As a reminder for the board, this is a request for a de minimis change. That does not require a public hearing. We first determine if, our, our common path has been to first determine if it is a de minimis change, if the request would qualify that way, and then to vote on if we would, if we accept the de minimis change. We do have guidelines for de minimis changes in our, let me, whatever the document I'm looking, in our rules and regs for site plan approval and special permits. And are those, Logan, are those already in the?
No, but I can upload specifically the section about.
Okay, I can just go over it quick. I have it up. If you don't mind, I can read it to us quickly. Which is, "The planning board, where it is not otherwise inconsistent with these provisions or with the town zoning bylaw, may approve de minimis changes to a previously approved site plan. De minimis changes may be approved for such changes including, but not limited to," and these are numbered, but I'll just go through them. "Total number of parking spaces, parking space size and alignment, minor drainage for surface stormwater, curb opening dimensions and locations, provided as approved by police and DOT, removal of underground storage tanks or other underground utilities, minor changes to water and/or sewer, changes in hydrant locations, changes in building elevations and topographic changes on portions of the site, changes in walkways and handicapped accessways, and changes in the type of screening, and types of screening or rubbish collection areas." So this isn't something that is directly on the list, but if we deem it of the same magnitude, we are, because it is a list that is including but not limited to, we have the ability to view this as a de minimis change. So I didn't, you said that this is an increase of about 160 square feet, right?
167.
Okay.
Yep.
And this is, but you said it doesn't change the impervious on the site? Did I, or what do we?
The existing land cover where this addition is going is essentially impervious now. It's a combination of pavement and compacted gravel.
Okay, so it, it, we're exchanging impervious surfaces, surface.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
There is one fine point there, though. This is going to be roofed. It's enlargement of the building.
It will be, yep.
So the roof runoff is considered clean for drainage reasons. And if it wasn't, if it wasn't roofed, then it wouldn't, it would add to the runoff calculations. But since it is clean.
Okay. What prompted this change?
Frankly, I'm not too sure. This came through somebody else in my office.
Okay.
So I could not tell you.
And this is, please remind me again, I know you probably covered it initially, but I'm about 85% right now.
Okay.
So what is the building and what is the change? Like, not numbers, just descriptively, like, what do we?
Yep, so it's a combination of office space, which is this lower section here.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest of it is a garage that's utilized for the construction companies' storage, maintenance on their own equipment. And so that, the expansion is an expansion of the garage area.
Okay. And is it still maintaining the same setback and everything?
So we still are compliant with zoning setbacks. We did update the dimensions on the plan that we submitted. So I think it's a little bit closer to the property line, but we're still within the, the allowed zoning setbacks.
Okay. All right. I turn to the board for other discussion or comp, or questions or general thoughts?
If you're ready, I would move to find that it is a de minimis change. If you're ready for that.
If we have a, if we have a second, absolutely.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Just because I want to make sure we're not cutting off? Fine, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we believe it is a de minimis change and now we can decide if we accept the de minimis change. Any discussion on that? Or I feel like if it's de minimis, it's fine to me, like, in this case, like?
I would move that we approve the de minimis change for 110 Pleasant Street, site plan approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Logan, that should cover us, right? As far as you know?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bang-a-rang.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Can I ask a general question? Not specifically on this.
Yeah.
But for the de minimis changes, is there a reason we don't get these plans in our documents? Do they not need to submit it?
No, sorry, it is there.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, if you refresh the page, it should be there.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah. So right now, the office is both short-staffed and Logan is pulling double duty, helping for other staff members that are out on significant leave, like, like independent of planning right now?
Right, yeah, I'm just curious because it's a little.
Yeah, no, so I just want to be, if things are set up a little wonky, we are, many hands make light work and that, on the other hand, fewer hands make well, heavier work. But, okay. Thank you. I'm going to go back to our agenda. Okay, that is our de minimis change. Public hearings. We have the public hearings for the Warren Articles for Town Meeting this weekend, for our ADU and flood insurance rate map updates.
It's loading. Hold on. Just thinking about it.
Yeah, that might be me. I apologize. I feel like the internet on any device I touch for about the past four or five days has been super slow. And so it might be lagging by proximity.
Okay. Almost, there we go, okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 28th, 2025 at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to make a recommendation to annual town meeting 2025 on alterations to code of the Town of Lunenburg, Chapter 250 zoning to conform with provisions of the Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act, being Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024, specifically relative to accessory dwelling units, sorry, ADUs and Article 4 to replace in entirety the floodplain bylaw, Section 250-4.8, to allow for mandatory updates to the flood insurance rate maps, FIRM, and required zoning bylaw and map for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
All right. So we have currently no public here for the public hearing, but we can discuss regardless as we should. And if people show up, that works. Again, if you were watching at home tonight on public access or on Face, I think they do Facebook Live, too. We do not have a Zoom link for tonight's meeting, so please, you can come on down to Town Hall and we will be happy to hear you out. But the board has discussed these previously over months at length as well. So wanting to give us, do we want to talk about them? Set, I'm fine, I'm comfy just kind of talking about them together because we've looked at these several times before. But if we want to be a little more breaky up, I'm fine with that, too. Okay? I'll just dive in. No, I've spoken with town council about these as well. And, I mean, it is, as we've talked about, there's a couple minor points that are more points of interest than anything else. Some towns have tried, I mean, the language is there, but if there were a motion at town meeting for the ADUs to say, oh, we should only allow this in single-family residence, like, single-family zoned areas or, or single-family residences, some towns have tried that and been shot down. So that is, if that were to come up, that town council put that on my radar as something some municipalities have looked at the last minute and doesn't really work. Now, we have not required previously that ADUs only be on single-family. So that would actually be a restriction we haven't had for a very long time, if it came up in addition, but also something else town council brought to me, it wasn't something that had been discussed as thoroughly. I don't, I didn't remember it from discussion here, so I wanted to call it out. For the floodplain, any work done, oh, two things with the floodplain, don't let me forget. The first is just any work done in the floodplain area, and I've been looking at the maps, the changes are very small, requires a special permit, not if your land is on the floodplain. It is a change in the floodplain area. And in many, in most instances, this is me, I mean, you're talking about a very small buffer around a stream or something. So, and that is not, that is a, again, that's a requirement of the feds so that people can get their flood insurance through the feds. It's, I think the odds of that ever coming up at this point are low anyway. But putting that on our radar. The other thing I wanted to call out is I had originally asked the, the planning office if we could reach out to the residents that are, that have, whose property is being impacted. I've had, I don't want to say extensive, but multiple significant talks with Katie Pate from DCR, who's presented to us before. And the, unfortunately, with the licenses and everything we have in town, that information is very difficult to come by. And I tried going through the maps and it requires a step-by-step for every property, looking on one map, then dragging a slider to see if there's a change, then finding the same spot on a different map to figure out what properties are there. It, the person hours involved are not feasible right now with everything else going on. And so with that, what I do intend to do is print up for town meeting for those who are there. Basically, the state has instructions for different, or sorry, the feds have instructions for tools you can use online. So people can give a quick check. They can find their property on the map, drag the slider bar and see if there's a change where they are on the map. And really, it, the changes are minor. We have 18 flood insurance policies through the feds in town. And this would not change much, if anything, in terms of those. So that's just where we are right now. I tried to follow through on that because we discussed doing it as a board and made that request at the office. But the, the time investment versus what's feasible isn't doable right now. I do intend to try to stop, go to the select board meeting tomorrow night, just to state that out loud to them as well, so it's out at their meeting as well, so the public is aware of it. Because I don't want, I, no point do I ever want the public to feel like we're trying to pull a fast one or covering anything up. There's just limited hours in the day. I kind of wanted to give those updates. Otherwise, we've seen it. Do we have other discussion on these topics?
I think just with the, the ADUs, just to reiterate, I do think it's important that as we, we present it, that we indicate that, you kind of brushed up on it, what terms of the amendments, that they're not allowed because this is mandated by the state and it is another, you know, in my opinion, encroachment of our local rights and bylaws and controlling our bylaws and zoning. And that acknowledge that the state does have the authority to do such, but I think, you know, again, I think an important point to, to emphasize is that the owner occupied aspect of the bylaw is going away. And, you know, to your point, it is comforting that the bylaw is otherwise not significantly different than what we had. However, that one I do believe is significant and, you know, opens up properties to, to investors that are looking to, you know, increase their portfolio of rental property and thereby making fewer homes available for people to purchase on their own. So it's, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of the state encroaching on the towns bylaw or the zoning, but acknowledge that they, they do have, have that authority. And, you know, and that, you know, dovetails right into the, the, you know, future discussions about the MBTA Communities Act, that this is not a one-off, that it's more of a trend of the state stepping in. And, you know, their focus has moved away clearly from education and it's now housing. And that's where a lot of the taxpayer dollars are now going, is to housing. And this is just an example of that. So again, I just think it's important that we make it abundantly clear that this change is driven by the state and that we don't have the, any of the options and to highlight the impactful changes.
As per discussions we've had in the past, full agreement on my end. I suspect, so I've worked under the assumption I was going to present these at town meeting like I have recently. If that's a, if people don't like that, let me know, but I was just kind of working forward under that to keep things moving. And as, and Glenn, as we've talked about before, I think I am, I am likely to make that point less emphatic, I'm likely, I'm going to make that point. I'm likely to make it, I believe, less emphatically than you might prefer due to my role of trying to educate people on the stage and get us through. But I also would certainly not object to that point, to, if you chose to raise that point from the floor, I, that would not bother me one iota because I think it's a thing we do need to understand and get across. I just, I don't want to, when presenting something we, that's important in my, in my estimation that we pass, I don't want to risk confusing people into maybe we shouldn't from my vantage point up there, but I think it's a point we do need to hear as a town.
I agree with everything you just said and I'm comfortable with that. I just, my main concern is that it just doesn't get swept under. I think the, you know, it's incumbent upon us and we have done our part so far in terms of speaking of it several other times, but I just, that one in particular, I think it just, the voters just need to be informed because, you know, and to your point, you don't have to embellish like I have tonight and previously, that just disclosing that that is the owner occupied aspect is being removed is, in my opinion, sufficient for notice for the voters.
Yeah. And that will abs, because the big takeaways for changes, I mean, the big takeaway for changes with the ADUs, owner occupied is the big change.
Yep.
That's really it.
Yeah.
Aside from very odd niche use cases.
Yep.
Like that could happen, I mean, if you want to get technical, a condo development could within its, within its own bylaws, like, and its own ability to do things at an ADU, I don't know, we considered one way or another before and that is more explicitly allowed. But those are niche and very limited in scope. And again, that's a, if a condo wanted to, and the condo, condo rules and regs still apply. This doesn't impact those. So it's not like someone in a condo could do it and force the condo or condexes we more commonly have in town, the, the small scale.
And also in fairness, the, the owner occupied aspect being removed could be, you know, beneficial to some people. Some people may view that as a positive. So I mean, it's, it's just, it's just information that should be shared.
Yes. All right. Other thoughts or discussion on these? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to, this is to, to, do we have a motion, is it to recommend approval? Is that?
Yeah, let me.
What was the wording on the?
Oh. I think it's recommend acceptance? Do, do that within the open?
Oh, I think we have to close the public hearing first, yeah.
Yeah.
You need to ask, even though.
And again?
You need to ask the public comment, even though there's.
Yeah. That's fair. I kind of did by implication, but you're right, I do need to do that overtly. Is there any public comment? There's no one else in the room with us tonight, so that is no public comment. If someone knocks down the door, we'll hear them. Okay, with all that said, we could have a, if we're done discussing, we could have a motion to close public hearing.
Was the public hearing for the map of the, for the floodplain as well? Are we going to talk about it before?
Oh, I, I kind of got into that, so I, I was just addressing them both as we talked about them. If we want to break it out, we can. This public hearing was for both.
Okay.
So we can't, so we, actually, yeah, the, is one public hearing for both, so we need to close for both. If we're done talking about it, that's fine. If we want to talk about floodplain more, I am fine.
Excuse me, if we leave the public hearing open and somebody does want to come in, that would allow for them to be able to comment.
All right. Can we just move on to other business while the public hearings open and go on to other things in our agenda?
No, I would assume that would only thus be allowed for the two things that we had.
Yeah, so in that case, think we need to close.
Okay.
Yep, unless we want to sit here.
And to that point, like, the, the public, public hearing, they would just be able to express their opinions and trying to get us not to support.
Yes.
The articles. And that really is, still applies, they could come to town meeting and still speak all they like and have the ultimate vote is on town meeting floor.
And, yeah. And frankly, if you're at home and you're like, but I'm coming down right now, we'll still hear you out. Like, we can't, we have to close the public hearing, but by the same token, if you were like, but I had this big concern, this should be addressed with amendment, you can still come down. We can still talk about things as a public meeting that is allowed, just the public hearing will be completed and we'll cast our vote on whether or not we recommend approval. Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing for the ADU and flood insurance rate map update bylaws?
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Do we have a recommendation to, would it be to, what would?
It's a recommendation to conform?
That's what it says in the?
I mean, it says a recommendation to annual town meeting on alterations to conform with provisions. Or it could just be a recommendation.
I am looking at that wording as well. Give me one second.
Isn't there a comma after zoning?
Zoning to conform with provisions.
Comma, to conform, okay.
Yeah, comma to conform.
So I'm pretty sure it's just recommend approval.
Yeah, okay, that's what, would we, let's handle them separately, just so we're a little more thorough in case it matters. Do we have a motion to recommend approval for the ADU bylaw?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Do we have a motion to recommend approval for the floodplain bylaw?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Going to move us back. There's one other. Glenn, you mentioned MBTA communities, and I did want to give us an update on that. I should have done that during director or chair report, but forgot. I have been speaking with our contractor and got that all squared away. And for MBTA communities, we will be, and he will be coming on the 12th and presenting to us, that is all squared away. He will be the, after like initial report and everything, he'll be the first thing on the agenda. And he will show us basically the options they have put together. And we will be able to discuss those. And I think we talked about this at our last meeting some, right, the timeline? Okay. I haven't found dates yet, but I'll have to in the coming week. And I may reach out for scheduling purposes. But the goal would be to have a couple, basically, public info sessions to talk, chat, gather info, get feedback. So that before our meeting on June 23rd, we have, look, we've had a chance to review, we've had a chance to present to the public, the public's had a chance to review. Because we don't have a second meeting in May, it gets a little dicey as well. But the goal being to have these discussions. And as a reminder, I did request at least one, what's often called the paper compliance option. What could we do that is, is there an, if there is an option for there to be minimal, if any, change to the town? And then, yeah, that is coming up on the 12th. 12th is going to be a full meeting. Okay. Let me find the agenda. Board discussions, certified vote revising 53G peer review standard operating procedures. Now, what this is not is a full edit of our standard operating procedures. That requires a public hearing and other things.
The rules and regulations.
Rules, sorry. Oh, that's right. Change to rules and regs requires that. We can change standard operating procedures. Thank you, Logan. And what this is, is, for those of us who have been on the board, really for Matt and I, I mean, I don't remember, did you overlap with Adam too? On the board, okay, great, then you as well. There was like, it was a shock to us when we switched over to Richard Harris and suddenly we always had to approve peer review, where in many instances it just kind of came through for us. And I chatted with Adam as well recently, we grabbed coffee. And that was something that was basically said to developers, you could elect to do this, you could elect to put in money and request the peer review before the board does. And yeah, if the board doesn't want it, I mean, I guess that's quote wasted money, but it's going to move you forward by like two to six weeks in terms of timeline. And Logan spoke with Jen, the town manager, about it. And the feedback basically was, because we haven't done it in a while, it would be better if we had a certified vote, which is just a vote, everyone agreeing, and then we put it on paper, bring it to the Think Town Clerk, just to say, this is what we did. This was our vote. Basically, to get back to that practice being an option as a convenience for the applicants. And I, to be a little more formal, I would recommend, based on the numbers that have come through, that we, that we make that an option for, I would recommend $2,000 as a number we've commonly heard for peer review, that make that an option that. My recommendation would be basically, if the planner, or I'd like it to be planner or board chair, while that planner role is not available right now, just to make it easy. Basically, where if one of those individuals thinks it likely, the, it's, the basic, I don't know the wording I want to use. I want developers to have this option. I want them to be able to turn to someone in the office and say, hey, do you think the board might want it? And they give their estimate, their guess, which I think, I personally think we're very predictable on that. And then if the developer wants to, either way, they could put the money into the account without having to wait for the board to request it and start the peer review process early. Are we comfy with that?
Can I ask, well?
Please, go ahead.
I think I would be more comfortable with making that a standard that we require peer review for any application. And then having the opportunity to waive the peer review at the meeting. I don't think, I mean, I don't, I can't think of hardly any applications that I would be comfortable reviewing without getting the input from the review.
I think that would be a change to rules and regs, not a standard operating procedure. It would be a bigger step. And a discussion that I've had with Logan in the office is, I would personally rather, we don't make changes to rules and regs until our planner situation is sorted out. Because I think that role needs to have active input into such things. And I would ra, I would rather a patch for now to help the applicants coming in. And then once we have a professional who can coach us better, handy, rely on that to actually help us shore things up in a better way across the board. But if we don't like this and we want to do it that way, we can do it. I can get it on an upcoming agenda. Realistically, probably would not be the 12th because if, remember, that one's looking pretty packed. But that is an option we have.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
My, I do share some concerns from prior with Mr. Allison. Just when I was first compiling all the information on this, one of my first concerns was that any vote that gets taken on this might end up, depending on the specific wording and such, kind of laterally colliding with the rules and regs in that they might be close but not completely aligned. And I hadn't, hadn't thought of that possibility before, having it be a requirement that then is addressed explicitly with a waiver, sort of like that table that Marjorie had back in the day where it's, has each individual item requested in the rules and regs? And then is it here, is it not here, or is it explicitly asked to be waived? Because those are three different things. And from the sound of it, I do think that would solve that issue on the offices side. I also completely agree with waiting on any revisions to the rules and regs and until the office is more stable. But at the same time, if it was something as minute as that, as a singular sentence or paragraph within the rules and regs, I think that could be more feasible. Just my two cents.
Okay, I appreciate it.
So in looking at this, and it's, I opened, I opened the link in our SharePoint. It's B, Submittal.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what document this is from.
This is from the Planning Board Rules and Regs. It's not, the text is, it's annotated slightly for clarity. But the text herein is under, let me get the specific section. Submission procedure. Section 3.7, Review by Consultants, 53G slash project review fees.
Okay, so, but this is our rules and regulations?
Yes.
So it already, it looks to me like we didn't need to make a vote, a motion and a vote to have the review. It looks like to me that we already required it. Am I reading this wrong? If an applicant fails to submit the required fee, the application shall be deemed incomplete. So it seems like it's a requirement already.
The caveat to that is essentially that in my experience, what the required fee is hasn't been made clear to applicants because that pre-submittal meeting described in the paragraph above, which is kind of a linchpin to all this, has not been happening. And/or when the application is coming to me for submission. I am certainly not qualified to be saying this looks like it will require $2,000 to $3,000 of what have you to me.
Right, I agree with that. So, I mean, the bigger problem I see is that we don't know anything about why there isn't a person there. And we've got nobody to answer our questions. And, I mean, could we just stop taking submissions until the, until that position is back up and running? I mean, because we're not supposed to change our rules and regulations without a public hearing. It's already in the rules and regulations that this is going on. So if, I don't understand what changing the standard operating procedure is going to do for us when it's already in our rules and regs. That this is a requirement of the office when there is a, the requirement of a pre-submission meeting is already there, right? It's implied at the pre-submit, pre-submittal meeting. I mean, even if, even if it just comes down to the meeting is the submission, I mean, that would qualify as far as I can tell. But, I mean, this is our rules and regulations, and we can't change it without a public hearing. But we're trying to go around that by changing our standard operating procedures? Is that, is that the intent?
The intent was to give developers another avenue than what we have been doing, which was to get them before us and have to have them get in front of us with plans and everything. And then we request peer review, and then they have to wait. It was not so much to get around anything as to give another avenue versus the way business has been done in the office for the past year-plus-ish.
Well, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, is that just because we've done the wrong thing for a prolonged period of time is no excuse to continue to do the wrong thing. I think, I appreciate your intent here, I think, but, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what the standard operating procedure revision is going to be. Is it here, timeline, there, so? I don't know.
No, the materials that are present here, just sort of context for the conversation that's happening now. I didn't have a chance to draft up a full piece of language that would reflect what the revisions would be, just with the, sort of juggling, if you will, at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
Quick point through you, Mr. Chair, on the pre-submittal meetings.
Yeah.
Under section 3.1, Submission, there's a paragraph, applicants are welcomed and encouraged to schedule one or more pre-submittal meetings with the planning department. These meetings can be to review the submittal materials or an in-house technical review with other regulatory departments. The way I read that is that they're not explicitly required. And because of that, the fallback is, in the earlier section B, that the applicant would be submitted, informed at the time of submittal what the peer review fee would be. And again, that kind of just comes to, you're being asked to provide $2,000 to $3,000 on the spot if you happen to not have that pre-submittal meeting. Could read that as encouraging those pre-submittal meetings, which I could totally understand. But again, I'm just trying to report what it's like on the ground right now.
Very much appreciated. And the issue is, oh, I've got, I've gained a newfound appreciation being in the office for how much, lacking a better term, how much applicants don't read. And I don't even, there's a time I would have said that and meant it pejoratively. Now it just means as a statement of fact, because it is so dang pervasive, I don't understand it, but it is what it is. In terms of, people don't read the application guidelines. They don't read the term, the terms and conditions that we set at meetings. When we just, you know, we talk about standard terms and conditions, we get it down, we review it, we sign it. The frequency with which those are not read is large. And I've gotten to see that then Brian Jengris, our building director, has to come in and say, hey, you know, you're supposed to have this meeting first. I need to check these things and before you, before I can give you the building permit. And those are all the things that are in a standard conditions and have been. So, there's a time I would have said they really need to, and I still feel like that. But the rate at which it doesn't happen leads me to believe there has to be some broader change in the long run to facilitate, I don't know what that is. And part of it was, with a more stable office, builders develop relationships. They'd come in and I think things happened more organically and smoother. I wonder, do you even have to come in at all if you're submitting via OpenGov?
Only to drop off hard copy requirements, like a hard copy of the plan if you're paying by physical check. In theory, no.
I wonder, and that's not really a topic for tonight, but I'd like, I wonder if that's something we need to make more clear via OpenGov? That these are steps that are like required or recommended as well? Because I wonder if having an online process, which is really good for us and for the applicant, but it might be creating the illusion of everything's online?
Correct.
And I think that could be a stumbling block as well. If the board would rather wait and look at everything in a broader sense, I'm fine with that. We cannot just not accept applications because we have to accept applications. That's what the department has to do. And we can't not accept them because there's things with timelines and everything. And developers or applicants in general get to apply. So we have to make use of what we have. If we'd rather wait, I'm comfy with that. I was trying to help things, this discussion came from things we had talked about previously as a board and trying to help remove one roadblock in what looked to be an easy way. I'm fine with waiting if we're not comfy with that.
Well, in project review fees in C, it does say that they're based on the actual cost of consultants' work. A deposit of $2,000 will be due at the time of application.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then cost estimate will be provided by the review engineer. And the balance of the funds are due within 14 days of whatever it's cut off. So I think it's already pretty clear. I mean, every application requires a review fee of $2,000 or more.
If this, if, if we would like to, so clearly, based on discussions we've had with multiple planners as a board, this process has not been enforced. If we want to enforce this process, I'm fine with it.
Yes, that's what I.
If, so, yeah, but I'm saying that to the board at large. If we aren't sure if we should, because we haven't been, I think that's a fair viewpoint too. I don't know that I care much either way. I do think having an answer one way or another is beneficial. And I'm fine either way we settle on that personally.
I think after reading this, the answer is clear. It's already required and-
So I've heard a lot from two of us, both Mads.
I'm going to say that it, it makes sense to enforce it-
Okay.
-as it's written. I think it, it becomes more burdensome to the board to have to have the applicants come to the meeting and then explain to them about the fee and then this, you know, going back and forth, whereas if it's written here that it's $2,000 and then in 14 days the rest of it's due, it's already written there, it makes more sense to just say, hey. Because it even says here, even if they don't have the pre-submittal meeting, it says at the pre-submittal meeting or at the time of submittal. So even though these meetings aren't happening, if we have that standard, hey, you're applying, this is it, you, you, you gotta put this money down, it's, it's right there.
Yeah, I do find it a little bit confusing and I think it, it's hard to argue against enforcing the, you know, the, the rules as, as, as they exist without a further, you know, review process. So, yeah, I, I think, but to that point, so are we saying we don't like, when someone comes in with an application and we're going to deem that the, the pre-submittal meeting, we're not collecting the $2,000 at that point?
The money is collected at the time of application. They would ideally be informed about it ahead of time during a pre-submittal meeting with it say, hey, here's what I want to do. And it's, oh, great. So that would be previously, I'm going to use Adam as example because that's where we, this was happening well. Hey, Adam, I want, uh, here's the, I want to talk to you about the development, the stuff I'm doing. We also didn't have all our applications online, you had to come in to get applications, right? Hey, I want to pull an application for a site plan approval. Oh, hey, what are you doing? Well, I'm doing this. Oh, well, if you're doing X, then I can tell you, you're also going to need, and there would be that kind of talk, the, oh, you're new, why don't I introduce you to the Bill, uh, to the building commissioner? And that was all stuff that happened in a more in-person, paper-based move. I'm fine with it. Logan, this seem, I'm assuming, but you know the backend and OpenGov and stuff much better than I. This is something that we could work some wording in to help people understand the process?
110%. There's an easy way to snag users upfront and before they can do anything else, make them answer the question, yes or no, I, you know, do want to submit? Yeah, if it's being enforced, then it can get-
Okay.
-snagged upfront.
Great. Then, then we have ways of catching people upfront and getting it in front of them and getting them on the right path earlier that way. I'm personally comfy with, I'm fine with that. I don't have a problem with that one bit. And I don't think, I'll take a vote just for the sake of taking a vote, but this isn't just for the sake of clarity and in case that needs to be memorialized at all, but I would look for a motion for us to enforce our standard operating procedures as Logan has detailed to us as written.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Just as a side note, I thought that we, well, I think at numerous points and I think even probably numerous points while you were with us, is that we have tried to get standard submission requirements for applications. And I thought that we were pretty close to having and if not, already had them, like, like, like a sheet for each application. Oh, you want to do this here? This is what you need to do.
That, yeah, that is work, we began with Adam, did some, Josie kind of took it upon herself to bring some ideas and stuff to us, working with Richard Harris as well. And we kind of did some of that, but now this has been the full shift to OpenGov and I can go back and I can go through, all of Adam's files exist. They are all backed up, convenient. He was very kind to us and did the backups himself when there was a server migration to make sure it happened correctly. So we have all those files. So I can try to go through them, Logan and I can go through them and find the older documents. Being realistic, knowing the summer break, I don't know that we're going to make progress on that front until the fall, but when I say summer break, it's not like we break as a board, but boy, the town government slowed down in the summer.
Can I make a recommendation?
Please.
If we do have, if we do catch stuff like this that's in our rules and regs, that we outline it or detail it or, or put it in our standard operating procedures so that it's already there, so that when we do have the public hearing, we can go back and look and say, oh, we want that, we want that, we want that. And then bring those all into the public hearing and so they move from the SOP to the RNR? Does, does that sound like an equitable?
I think that makes a lot of, my gut says sure. I have no clue if there's weird technicalities and why we would or wouldn't do that and that's one of the reasons I want to wait for us to have a more stable office.
Yes.
But on the surface, I'm in full agreement myself. I like it. Okay, we did hold the vote to enforce as written, right? Okay, cool, great. All right, I'm going to look at our agenda. Okay. I'm going to wrap board discussions then, if we're good with that. Anything big in a budding communities we need to know about?
No, a couple notices from Fitchburg, but nothing German to Lunenburg.
All right. Committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee. Tim is not here, but I was at the last couple of Master Plan Steering Committees and the last meeting was especially rough. Backing up a little, just a little broader, we got info from OverUnder on survey results and, and everything else, breaking it down, saying this is what we think we want, should be talked about in more detail, this is our recommendations, this is basically based on all the feedback, here's things we, that have come through on the surveys and public forum, forums that we think would be good, appropriate for Lunenburg, what we think wouldn't be, based on community feedback and everything else, and things that need to be discussed in more detail. The Master Plan Steering Committee is, golly, is there a lot of struggle right now. Just, the committee struggled to meet for a long time and now it is and people are feeling, I think, I, I can't really speak for them and I don't want to put words in people's mouths. I, I get the impression that there's a lot of trying to figure out OverUnder's recommendations and why, I'm going to reach back out to them and schedule another meeting. But the last Master Plan Steering Committee meeting got cut short due to an unfortunately worded motion that got voted through that was to do one thing and close the meeting and that was interpreted as what, another means closed, adjourned, didn't get through their agenda. But they are sending me feedback on their questions and everything so I can get more questions to OverUnder and try to get it back to them. It's a struggle right now, being, just being completely transparent. I think we're going to get there fine, but the difficulty meeting, I think, has, just in the long run, has made things harder, is what it is. Open Space Committee.
Have not met since last meeting.
All right, Municipal Building Design Committee.
We were scheduled to meet last Monday, but there was a quorum, there wasn't quorum. There was no meeting.
All right, Capital Planning Committee has not met. No, we haven't, okay. Economic Development Committee.
Still, still working to try to address issues that they see or perceive with Lunenburg not being, you know, as business friendly as, as, as wished. And tomorrow we are meeting with, luckily, the, the chair is willing to, to meet with us because the EDC's plan was to sit down with the land use director, but his, you know, being unavailable, thank the, the chair for stepping in and we'll have a meeting with the, the chair of the EDC, myself and the chair tomorrow to start the, the ball rolling, which I think will be an important step to get everybody on, on the same page. And again, appreciate your willingness to keep the ball rolling.
Happily. Oh, nevermind, sorry. Okay. Excuse me. Stormwater Task Force, Tim is not here. Monmouth Regional Planning Commission.
We haven't met, we'll meet Thursday.
I went to, I did their lun, the running interesting lunch and learn series to sit and chat about basically, how do we deal and figure with funds disappearing out from underneath us and we don't know what the future looks like? Just with all the shifts in federal funding and everything else. That was, I attended that, that, the cup, I think, two weeks ago. Very interesting, just to get other communities' feedbacks and talks. There was some promise that, there is promise and hopes that Brownfield's funding will remain solid, which is good for many municipalities, Lunenburg included. Yeah. And Monmouth Joint Transportation Committee.
We haven't met, we'll meet next week.
Okay. Minutes Approval.
If you refresh, it should be in your SharePoint now. Although I need to add the heading to it. These are the minutes for April 14.
Yep. You continue to write the clearest minutes I've ever read. Just- And I'm sure that has nothing to do with the fact that we have extremely similar habits in terms of boldface and headings. Once people are ready, I would accept a motion.
I'll motion to approve the planning board's minutes from the April 14, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Any requests for more time? All right, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Love it. Okay, meeting schedule. We meet at 6:00 PM here at the Bellotta Meeting Room at Town Hall unless stated otherwise. Our next two meetings are May 12th and June 9th. Our regular meeting would fall over Memorial Day and so, as is usually the case, we don't meet then. I mean, in that, of course, we don't meet then, but we don't schedule a separate meeting. So, May 12th and June 9th are our next scheduled meetings. Great. Public comment. All right, seeing none. Board comment concerns. All right, all that said, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that, that has it. Thank you, everyone, for another meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We'll see you on May 12th for what will likely be a good old marathon session.